Okay, so we'll open this February 1st, 2016 Farmington School Board Meeting. Is there any public participation? Laura.
Hi, Barbara Toriosso. First off, I was going to apologize for reading from my paper. I know it's not the proper way to speak publicly, but I'm really nervous, so I wanted to make sure
Go ahead.
That my notes were clear. I would like it to be known that I do completely understand that being an active member of a school board is a very difficult job. It requires countless hours of meetings, speeches, and research. I do not envy your job. There are many reasons that you are sitting there and I am not. Here in Farmington, over the last few years, serving on a school board has been especially difficult. The loss of another town from an SAU is unprecedented. However, it is of no surprise to any member of this board that the changes in budget cuts were coming. I sat in a meeting here in this room three years ago with the majority of this school board, with the superintendent at the time, Steve Welford, who stated that the Middleton withdrawal from the Farmington schools would be, and I quote, "catastrophic to the school budget." You knew then that changes needed to be made. Since that time, there have been several changes to the school budget, but it is of my personal opinion that these are not all the right changes. Making cuts is a very difficult job that needs to be considered carefully, and, as I stated before, you had three years to do this. It is my opinion that during that time, you could have considered cutting organizational fees, excess photocopy machines, telephone and internet bills, and the relocation of the SAU building prior to cutting paraprofessionals, transitional specialists, and vice principals. These cuts that were made will all directly impact the students of Farmington. At this past Saturday's deliberative session, it was discussed that the teacher health insurance policy is still under negotiations. This is approximately $324,000, or, as stated at the meeting, eight to 10 positions that will be affected. I understand that you said that you met with the teachers and the negotiations are ongoing. However, it is of my opinion that these negotiations did not take place in a timely manner. In a non-negotiation year, it is not the responsibility of the teachers to plan meetings to redo health insurance policies. Teachers are busy planning lessons, instructing students, and analyzing assessments, not looking at budgets. That's the school board's job. It was the school board's responsibility to meet with the teachers in a more adequately timeframe. I also do not understand why, as a board, you presented to the public a budget that was contingent upon the health insurance being approved by the teachers. I feel that this is fiscally irresponsible. You presented something to the people that was not definite. During Saturday's meeting, I supported Mrs. Cardinal's proposed amendment to increase the budget by half of the expected health insurance costs. My answer was not to simply throw money at the problem. My solution was to provide more funds to ensure that the children of Farmington have the necessary staff members to adequately provide for their educations. I must admit that I, as a parent and as a member of the Farmington community, am not blameless in this. I should have attended more meetings, asked more questions, and been more directly involved with the process. That is my fault, which I take full responsibility for, and it is something that I will have to deal with personally. However, in my opinion, the bottom line is that this school board did not finish their job completing this year's school budget, and it will directly and negatively impact the students of Farmington, including my children. As far as I'm aware, no one on this board has a child in the school system. So, it affects my family, and I am greatly disappointed at the outcomes of some of these decisions. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, seeing as nobody else wants to. Matter of fact, I got another call today. Someone that, these elderly folks, they haven't paid their mortgages in two years, and they're going to be out. And they're just, and also, not necessarily this town, but another town. They finally sold their house, and the town, I guess, has a law with a 15% penalty assessment beyond the interest. So that's $30,000 that they're taking right off the table. I mean, these are the kind of things that we're up against. You know, it sounds, you know, we've got to do the best job we can with the money we have. And if we keep just trying to push the budget up, push the budget up, it's not going to work, because at some point, there's a breaking point, and that's what we've got to consider. And that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
I'm going to make a statement. I think it's important for people in the public who come and are passionate at these meetings to understand this. Your staff that work in your schools are telling us that they're overstaffed. I talk to several staff members all the time, because I worked with them for 20 years, and they're telling me, and it's more than one, it's more than two, it's more than three, and it's more than four people that I've talked to, that they are overstaffed, and that more cuts that can be made. When I ask questions of the special ed director at one of the last public meetings, and I'm told that a case manager has six kids on their caseload, that is an inappropriate and inefficient use of a staff member, in my opinion. It would be great if every special ed case manager in the world had three kids on their caseload, because then that would be, the services would be fantastic. It's just not realistic. So, when we're talking about these cuts to certain positions that people really value and have been very passionate about, it didn't just come, like, off the fly. I'm going by what I know from being a former principal and running schools, and from what I hear from people working within the walls. And I think you'd be surprised. Now, only one of them has had the nerve to stand up in a public forum and tell you this, but there are many, many more that agree with that individual. And so that's part of why, and believe it or not, there are still cuts that can be made to personnel that I don't feel will negatively impact kids.
Okay. Laura, I appreciate, I just have, you're in tears, I feel bad. However, this, 12 years ago, we, well, more than that now, we got involved, and I was always involved with my kids in the school and the budgets. And what I found is that things seem to have a way of working out. We do listen to people outside of this board. I recently had a chance to go into Henry Wilson, to the middle school, in a few classes. One of the classes I went into had nine children in that class. So, it's, because you're at Valley View, that's great, you're, it's a great community and things that, you need to look at the district as a whole, and this is what we, as a board, have tried to do. We listen to you, but we listen to others, and we also listen, like Joe said, to community members. I have had three people call me, once that whole thing came out in the budget hearing, and tell me that they're this close to losing their house. That's going to tip them over the edge. So, don't lose your passion, stay involved, make us the mean ones. I mean, that's why we're here, we tend to expect it, sometimes it's a little, it hurts a bit. But, we do try to make the best decisions that we can, and we might not always get it right, but I don't think, I don't think this is wrong. I don't think we've, I think it will, it will work out fine. And I guess that's all I'm going to say to you. But thank you very much for your involvement, and don't let it jade you to the process, because we really do need people. Okay?
And even, even though we don't have, Kathy and I have kids in the district this year, I still have a connection to many students.
My niece is here, and, yeah, we have families.
You know, we're not just up here looking out for our own children, we're trying to look out for everybody's children in the decisions that we made. The budget that we are working on now has been two, almost three years in the making as soon as we knew that Middleton was going, and members of the community came forward and said, "Think outside the box." Members of the community said, "We want all the insurance to be the same." So, those are some of the things that we took, and we've really tried to move those into the budget in the best possible way for everybody.
Angie Cardinal, Main Street, Farmington. I guess the real question is, why is it that these comments and these conversations don't match what's in that budget right now? The budget still has health insurance savings that you don't know is going to happen, but you're saying you're okay with cutting more positions. Why wasn't that put into the budget to start with? And then, if you could get the health insurance savings, then that could happen. Why would you, why would you document a plan?
You can if you want to, I just, it's public comment.
I think, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, the $350,000, the $320,000, we had to cut it one way or another. The easiest way, in my opinion, was that we found insurance savings. Other than that, the other option was in people. It was, we needed, we had a target we needed to come close to, that the budget committee and the town could support.
Because, if you really thought you could, if you really thought you could, and, I mean, you got recommendations from your administration on where the personnel adjustments would be right according to the enrollment. You got all of those recommendations. I didn't hear a single person challenge that when it was presented to you back in November.
Okay.
I don't remember any challenging it that then. However, I know you don't want to waste time on this, because it's sort of a done deal in your minds, but it's very much not a done deal in our minds. You have a plan that is not going to go forward. I mean, how can you set yourself up for success when you know your plan isn't working yet? And why would you present a budget to the town that increases the taxes, right, because you have to absorb the fact that Farmington, I mean Middleton's tuition isn't coming in, knowing you still had too many personnel according to the enrollment? But you could still get that health insurance. You could have had a no-tax rate impact, in my mind now, now that I'm hearing all of this. It's just something to think about going forward for next year's budget planning. I know you're thinking this was two years of really harsh cuts, but again, this wasn't a surprise. Thank you.
Can I just say, though, I've got to say that if you look at the minutes, I personally will defend my votes, and I'll ask you to look at the minutes, I've been challenging the number of administrators for two years. For two years, I've challenged that number.
Okay. Approval of minutes, January 4th, 2016, non-public session, these are sealed.
Just table?
Table, okay.
Anything with seven? Table laws?
Okay.
We'll look at them in non-public.
And then, once we go into non-public, we'll review them, and then we'll bring that forward to...
Minutes of January 19th, 2016, public session.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Joel. Does a lot of minutes here approve. So, do I, who wants to start?
I didn't have any.
No? Did you have any?
Corrections?
Corrections?
None of these.
Okay. Stan?
Oh.
Okay. All right, so, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of January 19th, non-public session, one.
So moved.
Motion by Penny. Second by Joe. There is omissions, corrections? No? Hearing that, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Okay. Principal reports.
I've distributed copies for Valley View, and I believe we have, in your packet, should have been the high school, and Cynthia brought Wilson's report tonight.
Yeah. So, before we start, I'd like to introduce Dr. Keith Pfeifer. He is our new interim superintendent. He will be here part-time to fill in while Mr. Welford is out. Welcome.
It's nice to be here.
Sorry, real quick, can I just, was this on our drive? I didn't find this.
Yeah, this one was not.
No, he just, he just passed it out, it's right there in front of you.
Yeah, this one she just gave to us, but the other one was, the high school one.
Well, this is Henry Wilson, that's why it didn't say Valley View.
Oh, I have Valley View and Henry Wilson.
Valley View's in the folder.
It's in the drive?
Yeah.
The high school one is.
Okay, it is.
Yeah.
Is that Valley View's?
So, may I tell the public that this is the first time, there were no packets mailed out, everybody got their information from the drive, this is my own paper. No taxpayer dollars were spent. So, we're just getting used to, we're just getting used to it, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't pay the money, because I tried to do an actual...
Stop saying it. I know.
So, I wanted to recognize tonight several of our staff members who've stepped up, and they expressed some interest in different things through PD, through the Power School Grade Book, and MIMO, integrating science into reading and math, Google Docs, and Google Classroom, and then poverty and education. So I wanted to send a huge thank you to Tom Pringle, Rebecca Huff, Ann O'Sullivan, Steve Pescucci from the high school, and then Cindy Berry, who have been providing those PD sessions for our staff. It's been great to have other people giving PD and getting to learn some different things that the teachers really felt was important to them.
Can we join up?
Excuse me?
We need, we need some training, too.
I'll talk to Tom for you. We will be participating in Jump rope for Heart again this year, that will be on February 17th. We'll also be doing Read Across Farmington, which goes along with the Read Across America. Mrs. Holman has been going around getting different members of the community to participate in that, I'm not sure if she did the school board or not, but we'll be presenting that to the kids on March 2nd, and during our school-wide celebration, and I believe every student will be getting a book at that celebration that Mrs. Holman has arranged for the kids. The message you have here says Mrs. Giffington is bringing her kids to the voting booths, but it is actually the entire third grade class that is going to go to the voting booths to see where the residents of the town vote, and the town hall, and things like that. So they'll all be taking a walking field trip to do that. And we're still working on, she was still trying to arrange the dates, and I think she gave it to me before I left today, but it's on my desk. But she's arranged that with the town hall so that they can go to see that and check it out, and check out the voting booths. We just completed our mid-year benchmarks for STAR testing, and had data meetings with the teachers, they went very well. Our kids are making some nice progress, I don't have numbers, but they are doing some, making some nice progress, and progress reports went home on January 28th. Two more people that I do want to recognize is from the Drums Alive presentation, Ms. Cook and Mrs. Keller went in and were certified as Drums Alive instructors, and they are going to be starting that unit with their students, but they're also providing some after-school sharpen-the-saw activities. And they're doing Drums Alive with the staff, and so that's been well-attended, and they're having a great time doing it.
Nice.
Getting a thumping head from the drums up above my room, but besides that, it's good. They're having a great time. And, that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and recognize several people for their efforts, much like those things that are going on at Valley View. We have some individuals who are providing professional development at our last early release, Katie Gray and Aubrey Palacio, presented to the faculty and staff here at Farmington High School on teenage first aid, which was part of the Consolidated Health Holes. They met two hours with us, going over some of the different things that our students are going through, from anxiety to ADHD to depression, key signals to pick up on, how to handle when students come to them with those types of concerns. And it was, it was a great opportunity for them to bring back some information that they learned from their training through the Consolidated Health Program. And we'll continue to do follow-ups with them during faculty meetings throughout the rest of the school year. I'd like to recognize Tracy Cameron as well. Tracy has moved on to another position. She was here for 16 years, serving the students of Farmington High School, but also, she was a great supporter of the faculty and staff here, and she will surely, surely be missed, and I wish her the best of luck, as we all do here at Farmington High School. I want to recognize the faculty, staff, and students for their efforts during last Monday, the 25th. They did a wonderful job in, sort of, keeping status quo here at Farmington High School while we had barriers up, Secret Service walking throughout the building, but they did a great job in keeping the normal school day as best they could. There was some excitement and some staring to see what was going on, but they did a great job in making sure that the kids were safe and out the door they went. That evening was a great opportunity for my students. We had about 50 kids show up and partake in the rally. Some were right up front, close, which was nice, and they were able to either get an autograph from Mr. Trump, or one of our seniors got a selfie with him, which was kind of cool and her part, so that's something I think they're going to remember for quite some time. We'll be doing some follow-up mock elections this week, and announcing the results of those elections, the same time that it'll hit here in New Hampshire. This is National School Counselors Week, so I'd like to recognize Linda Scheff, Dennis Pelletier, Katie Sauer, and Emily Pirro for all the work that they do with our students on a day-to-day basis, a lot of time and effort going into making sure our students are ready to go each day. Winter Carnival Week begins February 15th through the 19th, so if you're out and about and you want to have some excitement and fun, stop by during the day or after school, especially the Friday before vacation, that's usually a lot of fun there.
What's the theme?
That has not been unveiled as of yet. That'll be a week from today, the students will get the theme. So, there's a lot of rumor right now, and I just want to make sure that nobody realize, I don't even know what the theme is.
See, this will...
Yeah, I tend not to get that, because I would probably let somebody know and get in trouble doing that, so.
It might be biased.
Upcoming events, we have Lakes Region Tech Center will be here this week, February 4th, to visit with our sophomores, they'll do their presentation on the courses that will be offered at the Lakes Region Tech Center. And then, the 12th, our students will take a trip up there so they can see firsthand some of the opportunities that they have going into their junior years. Our JT basketball tournament begins on February 24th and ends on the 27th. Again, all of the proceeds there go to scholarships here at Farmington High School. Again, like Valley View, we began our STAR assessment for our freshmen and sophomores, that testing will happen this week. We'll also be signing up for our SAT registration, all of our juniors will begin that process. It's about a 45-minute process for each student, and so we'll begin that, we'll do a little bit of a smaller start tomorrow, and then we'll go full-blown later on this week. Going ahead, program highlights, there's some Atlas training coming up. Brian Hawker, myself, and Jen Weeks will be attending a workshop, a two-day workshop. Our goal will be to sort of take the next steps in the curriculum alignment, also developing the competencies based on the specific units, and then being able to come back to Farmington High School and provide support to all of our faculty and staff as we continue the process of aligning our curriculum using the Atlas software. Our program of studies, we're putting the final touches to the program studies for the 16, 17 school year. Our goal, like was last year, is to have our master schedule completed sometime in May, so that all the students will know prior to leaving what their schedules will look like going into next year. Today, our unified basketball team won again, so they beat Summersworth handily, and so their next home game, their last home game, will be Wednesday, with our senior night for our unified, our boys' basketball senior night is scheduled for February 9th, and our girls for February 19th. So, that's all I have.
All right, I have a question. How many CTE do we have currently attending?
We have 25 students that attend.
25?
25.
So we lost 15, basically.
No, we were at, we were at right around 30 at the beginning of the school year, so we've lost five. Couple of them were more based on their classes and graduation requirements, so we've had to remove a couple of them because of that, but it's pretty strong at 25, so.
Also, manager, without objection, I want to thank the administration. The, I've had, I had great comments from the state police, Secret Service, about our facility, the police, our police, our fire. The cooperation among everyone was absolutely fantastic. And the police also had to police an accident, a serious accident. And many people from out of town came to our facility from Nashua, Manchester, Ware, and many different places that said, "Boy, you guys are really doing a nice job here." The custodians, can't forget them, because they did an outstanding job also to keep this place clean. And you had a bomb scare the other day, matter of fact, a week ago, but even on that, someone on the bomb squad said, "Man, your kitchen is one of the cleanest I've ever seen."
Yeah.
So, you know, these are the kind of things that really make us shine, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, they, all the comments were positive. Your professionalism, the staff's professionalism, the cleanliness of the facilities. And to me, the best part of that was Lori putting in the contract that the seats be reserved for Farmington High School students. And for that reason, they got to come in through the front door and actually be seated before the general public, and it was amazing for them. Whoever you support, I mean, it was just awesome for those kids to be able to see something like that.
Great opportunity for them.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
And may I suggest, if you do it again, have it at Henry Wilson or Valley View.
No. So, Stan has an in with Bernie, I hear, so maybe, maybe we'll get him next.
Just for clarification, the JT tournament, I have dates of March 22nd through the 25th, is that?
I'll double-check those.
It's typically in March, I just want to make sure so people from the public...
Let me double-check that, I'll email you guys if I made a mistake on that.
What'd you say, it is March?
Yeah, that was an email I received from the U.S.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do you want to give, do you want to do a Henry Wilson update?
I can do a big one. We're anticipating that there'll be end-of-term awards assembly, not this Friday, but Friday the 12th. The specifics and times are still to be determined, so it'll be advertised, as it typically is, through Henry Wilson. Life Skills Class visited TD Bank, I believe it was last week, as an off-site experience for some of the lessons they've been doing on money and budgeting and management and things like that. Students, again, have been taking STAR assessment, and some of the observational information from teachers, I've gotten several emails, and people in the hallway have seen me and said, "All these kids have gone, you know, their scores have really gone up, they've really made progress this term." So we don't have a full analysis of that, that's kind of just on that observational end. And then, the enrollment numbers there are as of today for you.
Thank you.
Do you, and I know we have some staff members from Henry Wilson here, maybe they can answer it, who the student council advisors are for Henry Wilson?
I do not know who they are.
Maybe someone could speak to Sarah, Sarah?
Sarah's seventh and eighth, and then Mrs. Bowden's fourth through sixth.
You know, Mr. Gezokis mentioned a mock election at the high school, I think it'd be appropriate to do it at Henry Wilson, too, especially, you know, this is 100th anniversary in the Hampshire primary. I think that would be great for the kids to, if someone could organize that at that school.
Anybody answering questions?
Why don't we have this printed?
Excuse me?
Why don't we have this printed?
The person who deals the most with that was not available today to get that, and I just started gathering things today, so.
So you wrote it?
Yes.
Okay. We are at our second round of public participation. Does anybody want to comment?
I don't know if I can.
You know what, even if it was, I'd still let you talk.
My question was just about preparations for SMART balance assessments, where that was for everyone.
As far as...
The middle school and the...
Any preparation for the students is going through the teachers, you know, sort of, we have just, the state online site has just put out the access to the manuals for those who will be giving it. All of our students are in the state system, unless we have some that have registered recently, so we need to make sure we have that connection before they actually take it.
Is there a window of when?
The windows have come out from the state, but we have not set when we are giving it at various levels. I sent those windows out to the schools, I believe, on Friday. So your question is very timely.
I was just curious.
I don't think anybody reported.
I sent those windows out to the schools, I believe, on Friday. So, your question is very timely.
I was scared.
Well, in addition to that, I don't think anybody in the department has access to the digital library, so you might want to get those resources for your teachers.
Did they wipe, because I did last year. Did they wipe that clean when they wiped everything else out?
Everybody should still be in, if there's anybody there, but I just, I just don't remember anybody being in there, because I take care of that, so I can check.
I know I was in last year, but that isn't a section that I've gone into recently to see if the connection's still there.
But are the teachers in? Are the teachers?
On the teachers' end, yeah.
Anything else from the board before we go into non-public?
Our superintendent wants to speak. I haven't heard much from him so far.
Do you have anything to add for tonight?
No, I don't, other than I have nominations, and I have some sort of issues.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public session one, under RSA 91A:32AB and C for resignations and nominations.
Second?
All in favor of my role?
Aye.